That's tier, check one, two, check, hello? Everybody hear me? Okay. Okay, good evening. It's five thirty here on Tuesday, October first, and I'd like to call to order this regular business meeting of the Stevieville City Council, and welcome everybody here tonight for the meeting. And before we begin the formal agenda, I wanted to start out the evening by going down to the end of the table here, asking Councilmember Taylor to join me. All right, got the camera on us? All right. Okay, all right. I'll get you up here. Tonight is a special evening. The word bittersweet is often used in occasions like this, but it's bitter to lose a council member that has been such an integral part of Stevieville and has served with a servant's heart for so long, 2009 to 2013, four and a half years. But it's sweet because she's making this move because of great things that have gone on in her life and an opportunity with family that she's too good to pass up. So Martha, on behalf of the council, I want to thank you for all you have done and your participation and service to the community and the citizens of Stevieville. I'm just very thankful for that, and we're gonna miss you. And just the plaque says, Martha Taylor, and grateful appreciation for your dedication and service to the city of Stevieville, City Councilmember 2009 to 2013. And let me just say, Zach, thanks for letting us borrow from you. We appreciate it. A lot of nights, you were waiting for family, and I know you were holding things down, sort of. She was texting us saying, hey, get the kids fed or whatever. So anyway, Martha, thank you very much. Let's give her a round of applause.
Well, I guess I could better get used to speaking from this podium, because I'm gonna be harassing you guys in the next few years. No, I mean, the mayor was correct, it is bittersweet, and my husband and I live by a home out in Timber Creek Estates, so we've got a new house getting set up out there. And I do, I've enjoyed the last four years. There's been a lot of long nights, there's been a lot of frustrations, but looking back, I've got a lot of good memories, and I've grown fond of every single one of you in one way or another. So I'm also grateful for the experience that I've had. I will never look at government the same, some of it's good, some of it's bad, but I do, I do have an appreciation for the way that government, especially on the municipal level, is run, and there's a lot of logistics that go on that involve a lot of time and effort, and I appreciate our staff and our council and everybody else that's been involved with that. So I will miss you, but I think there's a Steadco meeting on next Tuesday, the eighth, and I don't know if y'all have a meeting or not for council, but I do plan on going to that if we're in town. So I plan to stay involved. I'm still excited about the growth of the city of Stevieville and economic development, and I'm very passionate about the Personnel Committee, so I hope that once the pay plan information comes back, that you guys follow through on that, and I'll be interested, and I'll be keeping in touch, and I may show up for one of these meetings. So that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you, Martha, very much. The other thing I wanted to mention and say is a big thank you. Stevieville has just completed its Rodeo Heritage Week this last week, and it was a fabulous success. It kicked off a week ago with a parade that hadn't happened in town for a while, and it really was one of those things like Martha mentioned about bringing the community together that was really, really special, and it was also an economic development event for us. Every hotel room in town was full for the weekend, and that was great. And you never know when you might get lucky. Preparation meets opportunity. Saturday night, I was at the performance, and there were twenty-three individuals there representing twenty different countries that had come to Stevieville to learn about agricultural and economy in the United States, and the Department of State brought them to Stevieville, Texas, to see that firsthand. And they were, they were blown away by the hospitality of our community, and that was exciting to see, as well as a weekend where it was like being at the Wrangler National Finals rodeo, because it was, it was just about every top ten competitor in the, in the sport that was here. And the opportunity for us to leverage our uniqueness as the cowboy capital of the world for those that might be making business decisions in that, in that arena is one of the reasons why that week is so important to us from an economic development perspective, but also it is a way for us to come together as a community. And I was really proud to see how the community came together the entire week with different events. So great success, and just thank you to the committee that put that together, and I know we'll, we'll look forward to next year. The second thing I wanted to mention, and Martha already said earlier, and she was correct, the Stevieville Economic Development Corporation Annual Meeting is October eighth, and I would like to encourage all the business owners in town to look to attend that, because it is really important that you get plugged in to that process so that you can participate and be part of the solution as we look forward to looking for ways to increase our, the strength of our economy in Stevieville. And so that's, that's next, it's a luncheon, and if you're not a member, you might look at becoming one, because you can, again, be a participant and engage. So just wanted to mention those two things up front. With that, we'll move to the Citizens General Discussion Section of our agenda, and see if, I've got three forms for folks that have turned in to look to speak, so I'll just ask you to come forward and state your name and address for the record, and then proceed with your comments. So Mr. Goble?
I'm Freddie Goble. I live at 413 Bluebonnet. I hate to be here every time, I want to complain, but I am very, very disappointed in not, in the United States government, for one, and also in our city government. We've taken out prayer, which we sure need to get that back in there. Without it, we're not going to get this under control at all. And for the government that we have, it's supposed to be for the people, by the people. We have elections, that's what it's been for. We thought we'd get representation in here that would do what we wanted ourselves, but evidently down the line here somewhere, over half the city council thinks are smarter than the people that's voting them in. I just can't understand why anybody would have the audacity to vote for a raise in anything right now. The way the economy is today, it don't sound like a smart move at all. The city council is going to do exactly the same way as the federal government. Can't they see what the government's doing to us? You're doing it to the people that are voting you in also. Let's do something different about this. Let's get some more of these businesses going. Whenever we had a meeting about these raises for the city taxes, they were adding to paper, wanting people to vote for yes or no for the tax. Okay, seventeen percent of them said, yeah, they wanted to raise taxes. I think it was seventy-three percent said, no, we do not, do not want to raise the taxes. We get up here the next day, we even got one guy, instead of abstaining, he voted for the taxes instead of abstaining, because he didn't understand what was going on, he said. And there's others on here that, we're still in the good old boy situation. We've run this good old boy thing into the ground. We're trying to protect the businesses that's here, the businesses here, without any competition. Another deal right there, we get three minutes to talk. There were four or five people that had twelve minutes plus to tell us what we ought to be doing on this here. That don't seem quite right, I can't do it in three minutes. I don't know of anybody else. Well, out of the fifteen people that was up here talking about these taxes here the other day, what was it, three of them said that, yeah, they did want it. The rest of the fifteen didn't want taxes, but yet we come here and it's voted in against our will. So I think it's about time that we get some competition going. What happens whenever the school facilities and everything, like all these sports deals, have all these games and competition and everything else? If they didn't have competition, where would they go? The same way our city is going. Now, I know some of you fellows are in here, are working hard to get some more businesses in here to help pay for these taxes and get some of our people back to work locally, instead of having to go to Granbury, have a place else to shop, and get what we need. That just takes time out, and they gotta go everywhere else to work. Okay, and there's planning and zoning, I didn't know that was coming up, but it's coming up. Instead of making everything where it needs to be on planning and zoning, I've talked to people about these vehicles parking all over the yards here, there, and just anywhere they want to park, parked on the wrong side of the street, and anything else like that, where there's no taillights that you can see in, at nighttime. But they say that it's not, that nothing they can do about, because, but they got a law that says that they can. They say, well, they're afraid to give everybody a ticket for this. Why is a law? Let's work, start working for the people, can we please?
All right, thank you. Ms. Cole?
My name is Marian Cole, and I live at 432 Tanglewood Trail. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of a group of concerned citizens regarding the recent action of the city council. For some of you, what I'm saying will be just preaching to the choir. For others, there might be a few stings, and maybe I'll hit a nerve or two, but I'm not here to berate or belittle. Just maybe open your minds a bit to the direction that the city is going. Now that you have passed a balanced budget and raised our taxes, and after attending all three meetings regarding this tax increase, I made a few observations and imposing some challenges. One observation I made was that up until the third evening, everyone to Mayor Weldon's left spoke in favor of a budget that included a tax increase, just like the left of our federal government, tax and spend. Everyone to the mayor's right spoke against including a tax increase as part of a balanced budget, conservative and wanting to find ways to cut spending. I just thought that was really ironic. One thing I did learn from those three nights' experiences is that even though the council praised the citizens for coming out and expressing their opinions, in the long run, it didn't matter. When City Hall has its mind made up, as the old saying goes, you can't fight it. Most people left the meeting that night dejected and feeling like they have totally wasted their time. So now, here's one of my challenges. Show those people who attended those meetings that their efforts were not in vain. As elected officials representing the citizens of Stevieville, you have the obligation to hold the city administrator accountable to bring to the table a pay plan by November first. This has not been done since 2009, and it's time you hold up your end of the elected bargain. For years, the council has gone with the status quo. Well, the status quo is obsolete. The budget process is obsolete. A straight across-the-board pay increase does not address adequate compensation, especially for our policemen and firefighters. It is time you hold the city administrator accountable for his actions and his policies. I thought I had ten minutes, since I'm seeking for a group. At the last meeting, Mayor Weldon presented a logical and common sense approach to balance the budget and to provide pay increases without raising taxes. All but a few of you symbolically wadded that up and threw it in his face without any consideration. For years, the council has allowed the city administrators a set policy, rather than the council setting policies for the city. This backward thinking must come to an end, or we're never going to progress. Using fear mongering about cutting city services if taxes aren't raised is beneath your dignity, or at least it should be. I challenge you to come into the 21st century, think outside the box, look at the whole picture, weigh your options. For instance, if it only takes two people to mow the cemetery, why hire three? Last year, there was some work being done on my street. I watched one morning as five workers were there. One was actually working, one other was actually handing him tools with which to work, and the other three were just standing there. They never did one thing the whole morning. This is not how we want our tax dollars to be spent. Look at the hours your city employees are putting in, are some working less than eight hours a day but getting a full day's pay. There's probably a lot of overhauling and a lot of scrutiny that can be done in several areas of city services. You may think that the tax hike was minor, but every minor tax hike holds, adds up to be a major one. I understand that you don't want to dip into the reserves, and I agree, it's not a good idea, but raising taxes is not always the best answer. It's the easy way out. It's a Band-Aid, not a solution. It is quite obvious from your actions that raising taxes is not a solution, since this council has raised taxes every year, with the exception of one since 2009, with either Councilman Nix or Councilman Evans posing the motion to raise the taxes, while the other one always seconded the motion. And the voting records show that consistently, Councilman Nix, Evans, Cross, and Councilwoman Taylor, always voting in favor of raising taxes. And what, and what good has it done? You're still raising taxes, and it hasn't solved anything. Why should the citizens pay for the lack of planning on the administration's part? Councilman Cross said the city was not like the federal government and that it couldn't print money. Well, raising taxes is just another way to do that. This tax increase doesn't even begin to address the serious needs of this city: dilapidated sewer and water lines, street repair, poor drainage, bat-infested buildings. We have many problems in our infrastructure that should be addressed before any new projects like annexation and water wells should even be considered. And then there's the issue of economic development. Have you noticed the businesses that are popping up on Highway 377 between Dublin and Stevieville? I was in one of those businesses the other day and asked the owner why he didn't locate his business in Stevieville. He was more than happy to answer my question. He had wanted to be in the city, but the rent was too high, and the owner would not negotiate. The regulations set forth by the city were too stringent, the requirements unreasonable, and the process too lengthy. It was just easier for him to locate outside the city. This city needs to be more user-friendly in its approach to new businesses. New businesses need to be encouraged, not discouraged and turned away. Maybe this council needs to look into, at those regulations, codes, and requirements. Maybe you'll find some things that are outdated and need revamping. Maybe you will discover some of those unreasonably requirements that are turning businesses away. As a council, economic development should be a major concern, because with new businesses comes new tax dollars. Another observation I made during those meetings, did you notice the median age of those in attendance? It was mostly all of us old timers that had been around here for a long time. Where were the thirty-five to forty-five-year-olds? The two gentlemen in that age bracket who were here and spoke before the council were quite eloquent and convincing. My son, who owns businesses here, falls in that age group, and I asked him, along with several of his friends, to attend these meetings. Do you know what they told me? Why should we? The city is going to do what it always does in the same old way, with no regard for what we think. It's a waste of our time. These young people, who should be the heavy lifters of the community, are apathetic because of your actions. They have no confidence in the city government. So I challenge all of you, get out there, recruit these young constituents, encourage them to get involved by serving on committees and boards. Show them they can make a difference. We need their vibrancy and their ideas. So where do we go from here? Well, after many years, we finally have a mayor who is not business as usual. He doesn't settle for the status quo, and he's not going to go along to get along. He has a proven record of leadership and vision, and I am not in any way belittling any of our former mayors. They have all been good people, but just because one is a good person doesn't always qualify one to be a good leader or to make good decisions. We have so much potential, and we have so many resources. You have a golden opportunity to really make a difference in the growth of this city and make a difference in how this city is perceived. In 1993, Stevieville was named one of the best 100 small towns in America. Even though that's still touted on its website, I'm not sure we would qualify for that status today. We need to bring that atmosphere back to this community. So I would suggest roll up your sleeves, put away your grievances and petty animosities, your old-school ways of thinking, and work together to find common sense and logical solutions to make this truly one of the best 100 small towns in the United States of America. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Rivera?
My name's Cyprian Rivera. I live at 1050 North Paddock Street, and like the other two folks that spoke, I am disappointed that we did speak out, speak up, and came forward and voiced our opinions and our concerns, and there still was a tax increase. And then I saw the newspaper, and Susie Warren, I remember reading what she wrote, and that's the main reason I'm here today, is she wrote that, are there city employees here? Yes. She wrote that they need races, and that that hasn't happened, and that there's, they can't come forward, that they're scared to come forward. And that really shocks me, considering that we have the United States flag there, that we have the Texas flag there, that we just said the pledge that says liberty and justice for all. And I just want to say, it's too bad, you know, I don't like that. Our taxes have been raised, but I don't know what kind of country we're gonna raise our kids in. If city employees can't voice their, you should be fighting for your races if that's what you need. And, and I'll give you an example of what happens when you don't voice your concerns. I'm a teacher in Dublin, and I spoke to the Dublin School Board a couple of weeks ago, and my wife and I, we both teach there. And because the last four years, they've increased our pay, I mean, our day by forty-five minutes. This year, we came in, and they said we had to be at school at 7:30. Our kids, we drop them off, and I'm giving you an example of what happens when you don't speak up, because if you don't go after what you need and what you should rightfully have, it's not gonna happen. And so I was really concerned with what Susie said. Maybe she said that because she's near retirement, maybe she's in a position that she can do that, but, ladies, I was gonna say guys. We live in America. You know, I'm not American by birth. I was Mexican born. I was born where Pancho Villa was killed, but I'm Mexican, Texan, and American, I would say by birth, but by race, I'm Texan. And I, and that kind of mentality really needs to be done away with, because this whole week, I've spent teaching my kindergarteners about Texas symbols and the US symbols, and it just, I think that everybody should be concerned with a statement like that in our newspaper on the front page, that city employees are scared. Why would you be scared of losing your job if you need a raise? I mean, this is America, we have the First Amendment right. And I have one minute left, and I guess that's it. People need to speak up, you know? I know that some of the folks that come here, it gets old, I'm with you, my wife, she said, honey, you could be at home helping Chelsea with her homework, and she's right, but if we don't speak up, who is gonna speak up? Who's gonna do it? Because nobody's gonna do it for us. And that's what I teach my students every single day. And so this is my little bit of involvement in that. And I am disappointed that the taxes, I wanted to say that again, the taxes were increased. But once they have been increased, the pay does need to be worked out, and the employees do need to be paid fairly. And that's it, thank you.
Okay. And Mr. Rivera, not to belabor the point unnecessarily, but as Mr. Nix has just pointed out to me, there are, there's two things going on here right now. One, in the paper that's been highlighting the struggle the county has been having with employee pay, and the comments that you may have read are tied to that issue, but I think that doesn't detract at all from the point that you've made about the importance of us living in a free country and being able to communicate what our, what our concerns are. And we, as a council, I mean, I just wanna be, just take this opportunity to let you know that I don't think there's anybody at this council that does not have an open-door policy that allows any and all employees to call us or email us or talk to us. And so just because you didn't see them speaking that night doesn't mean that, I mean, I got phone calls, I know that others did too, so we are, I need everyone to understand, and again, I'm not, I'm not saying this to counter the points you made, because they were excellent. What I want to do is make sure that everyone in this community knows that we, as a council, are very interested and willing to listen to all input from city employees and...
Well, the way it read, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, right, right, okay. All right, thank you. Okay, any others? Yes, sir. Mr. Johnson?
Good evening, John. I only need about three seconds, or three minutes, but, Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to just briefly speak this evening. I did want to take the opportunity to invite each of you to...
Excuse me, point of order. Mr. Johnson, would you please state your name and address for the record?
Sorry, Andrew Johnson.
Stevieville address.
Austin, Texas, so...
There you go.
I lost, lost my place. And I'm taking more than three seconds. All right, anyway, I just want to take the opportunity to invite the community, as well as new mayor and council, to our Dr. Sheffield's Open House, ribbon-cutting tomorrow for his district office. Representative Sheffield's excited to have this location up here in Stevieville, and we definitely want the community to come by and help us celebrate that opening. From four o'clock till 5:30, the Chamber of Commerce has been gracious enough to come down, and at 4:30, we'll hold a ribbon-cutting ceremony, so if you can swing by on your way home from work or whatnot, I'm sorry, at the Interbank Building, 150 North Harbin Drive, Suite 402, on the fourth floor, if you can take the elevator up, you'll see us right there. Four o'clock, hope you're good on this.
All right, thank you. Mayor, can I say something? Sure.
I just want to, Mr. Ex-Councilman...
He's just sitting right here.
Yeah, I know.
It's a nice view, yeah.
I just want to mention that, I just want to recognize you, that during the legislative session this last year, I used, you and I communicated several times on issues, both for the city, of Stevieville, as also for the industry that I represent, and I want you, I appreciate the work you did for us.
Thank you. Okay, and I'm also gonna take the opportunity, because Mr. Coiser and I were talking about this earlier today, and not to throw you under the bus, Andrew, but there's a, there's a bus in this statement, but not intended to Representative Sheffield. There's been a lot of frustration in this town with the Texas Department of Transportation and their performance as an agency. Our representative is in Austin as a vehicle for us, no pun intended, to deal with that, okay? The... The state is structured so that our regional manager really has no teeth to do anything, okay? He's just said, he's just, it's told, hey, go execute. It would be very beneficial for this community, as we've talked, and I've talked to Representative Sheffield about as well. Rural communities struggle today to get a voice with these major agencies that are dealing with urban issues primarily. Well, the Northwest Loop is an issue for this town that needs attention. And, you know, so y'all come out and go to the ribbon-cutting and talk about Northwest Loop, so...
Now that we have some topics for discussion for tomorrow, and I know Councilman Pendleton's been in touch with us on the light up here at Ollie Street, and there's some right-of-way acquisition problems with that, and we can't build it until we have the property. But yes, the Northwest Loop, the last I heard on that was that they're changing contractors.
So, and my point isn't necessarily to the project itself, but I think to communicate to the citizens in this community that we do have a representative that's got an office in town, he's having a ribbon-cutting, and so there's an opportunity for you to go in and express things that you're interested in.
Absolutely.
And be heard firsthand, so it's a great opportunity to do that and have government working for us. So, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, with that, any other? Okay. Then we'll move to item three, Planning and Zoning Commission. And I ask Ms. Chu to come forward, please, and give us the briefing on the item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a final plat for Phase Three of the Lakewood Estates subdivision. This phase consists of 7.4 acres. It is a single-family residential subdivision, and there are 20 lots that will comprise this third phase of the subdivision. The final, or the preliminary plat was approved by the council in May of 2008, and there are a total of 81 lots to be constructed at full development. This final plat does meet the requirements of the city's subdivision ordinance for a final plat, and the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff recommend approval as presented. If you have any questions, I have the exhibit here. It did not show up very well, but I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the staff report.
Any questions, Mr. Sweeney?
On the map, it shows Zone X. Is that, I'm assuming that's a floodplain?
Yes, that is actually...
Is that a 100 or 200-year floodplain?
The hatched area that says floodway, that is Zone AE, and that has the creek through it. Zone X is the 100-year floodplain, and then there is other floodplain area immediately to the south.
So my question is, then on lot, it looks like number five?
Yes.
That the slab could actually be in the 100-year floodplain, then?
It is actually in the 100-year floodplain with an approved elevation certificate and approval on the final plat, as long as the finished floor is a foot above flood stage.
One foot above, okay.
That is acceptable, and they actually can purchase flood insurance. There will also be a certificate of elevation required for Lot 6. Back corner of that, and with the new FEMA regs, they do require it.
So it's just the slab itself, the footprint, the foot floor, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? When was the preliminary plat approved again?
In May of 2008 for a total of 81 lots. There were 22 lots in the first phase. There were four additional lots that were approved earlier this year, and then these 20.
Okay, so this plat is a
Final.
Final of what was a subset of a preliminary plat that was approved?
Yes, our ordinance does provide for phase development. Yes.
Okay, all right, great. All right, any other questions? If not, I guess we don't have to vote on that, do we?
Mr. Dugan, I know if we accept the final plat of Lakewood Estates subdivision Phase Three?
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Nix, seconded by Mr. Hogan, to accept the final plat of Lakewood subdivision Phase Three, 7.404 acres. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries unanimous vote. Lakewood subdivision Phase Three, final plat. Thank you, Ben. All right, the next item, four, is to consider an ordinance approving a negotiated resolution with Atmos Energy Corporation. And I'll ask Mark to give us a briefing on that, please, sir.
Thank you. We do have before you an ordinance that was presented to us as a part of a coalition that we are a part of. And at the end of the day, if you will recall, in the springtime, we did opt to participate in the negotiating and agree to whatever was negotiated on behalf of this coalition to participate in that final resolution. What you have before you is that final resolution. And I'm sorry, but I don't have what that final rate was to the residential customers, but I'm, 74 cents, approximately 74 cents a month is what is stated that would be the average residential rate increase that will occur on their natural gas bills. With that said, I'll be glad to answer any other questions. There is a model staff report that's given to us by the, from the coalition.
What is the percentage of increase at 70 cents? Do you have any at this ballpark?
I want to say it's like a 3% increase is what I recall.
Any questions for Mark? Okay, I'll entertain a motion then.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance 2013-18.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Pendleton, seconded by Ms. Taylor, to adopt ordinance 2013-18 approving a negotiated resolution between the Atmos City Steering Committee and Atmos Energy Corporation Mid-Texas Division regarding the company's 2013 annual rate review. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Ordinance 2013-18 is approved as presented. All right, at this time, we'll move to item five, the Finance Committee report, and I'll turn it over to Councilmember Sivin.
Thank you, Mayor. We met on September the 10th, and Malcolm Cross to my right, Alan Nix to my left, and Brady Pendleton to my left are on the committee, the Finance Committee. We had four agenda items that we're bringing toward, for the council, two of which require a vote tonight. The first one is item A, refers to electricity contract. I'm going to let Mark give some background, but basically, the issue is, in a nutshell, is that we have the opportunity to lock in an electricity rate for five years past the current two years. We still have remaining, is it two years left on our contract?
16, yes, sir.
Okay, so that's, so through 16?
It is through July of 2016 is our existing...
Current one, and it'll go five more years. So anyway, the issue is, we have a, it's a very good rate, and he's bringing to us tonight a recommendation to adopt or to authorize the staff to enter into a contract for that rate. So if you want to take it over and talk about it.
Well, a couple of things here. We have discussed this at the committee level. Some additional interests that I have and wish to share with you, but there are two contracts in particular that we will need to, that I am asking and recommending for approval. The first is with the company. They are called The Five, I believe is what they're called. So we will need to agree to contract with them, and they will basically be getting paid as a piece of our utility rate that we will be approving, which will be the second item, in essence, so the second contract. But they did approach us. They have been working with cities. They've kind of broken off as a result of deregulation, and a lot of these industry professionals, they've broken off from direct energy and the former TXU, started their own company. They've been working with small communities, have been very, very successful at guaranteeing some rates even below what we currently are at. We are currently right above 51, five, would be five and one-tenth of a cent, something like that, per kilowatt hour. And they've said, you know, look, we think rates are going to be going up. I agree with them. We discussed that. If you think rates are going to continue to rise over the next, to the year 2020, then they are saying right now is a perfect time to try to lock those rates in. They are very familiar with a couple of companies that are willing to do that. Not all of the companies are. So they said, if you're interested, if we are successful at bringing you a rate less than five cents, would you be interested in locking in that rate? Which we said yes, y'all have agreed, and that's what we are bringing forward to you. They submitted solicitations for rates. We have, the state of Texas is now in, the state of Texas General Land Office is now in the business of selling electricity. Exactly what they have on their properties, I don't know, but they're able to sell the properties as a retail electric provider. We have been given, and I sent to you earlier today, because the rates have to be made within 72 hours, we have to sign the contract. We received the rate today that I emailed to you earlier with a complete copy of a contract. The contract is nothing out of the normal, other than it would be referred to as, instead of a sales contract, it will be an interlocal agreement with the state of Texas and the General Land Office. So that's one thing that I've kind of, I'm finding very interesting. The second thing is, and I'm very, very excited about this, the rate that we were given to cover us until the year 20, in essence, the end of 2019, is 4.89 cents. So we're looking at saving almost two cents, completely, really, really little over two cents. Just to quantify that, that is approximately $25,000 in savings that we will start seeing, but we obviously won't see that until 16, 17. So with that said, we do, I am asking for and recommending approval of the contract with Five, and then also a contract with the Texas General Land Office for an electric rate of 48, whatever it is that we...
Does that need to be in two different motions?
And I would ask so, just so we make sure we clarify the two different contracts.
Okay.
One of them, one of them is how they're going to be paid, and under the contract, they are paid under the 48.9.
Okay.
So we don't, we will not be issuing a separate...
So the first motion, and I don't see a motion number on here, so we're just making a motion for, to authorize...
Yeah, just approve the contract.
Approve the contract. So what we're asking at this point is, I'm going to move that we authorize staff to engage into, under a contract agreement with The Five?
Second.
Okay, it's been, it's been moved by Mr. Sweeney, seconded by Mr. Nix, to approve a contract for electricity negotiation for retail electric provider from The Five. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Mark, for the record, I needed to ask a couple of questions. Is this a startup company, this company called Five?
The Five, I believe, had been in business for a little over a year now. So I would say somewhat, yes, a startup company.
Right.
As we discussed in committee, they're obviously out hustling for business, and so maybe we're getting a little bit extra, better deal to try to get us on their resume, which, you know, may be why we're getting such a good deal as well. But yes, to answer the question, they've been in existence now. Their respective resumes of the individuals, they've all been, and I thought, I think they said something like 75 or 100 years' worth of combined service in the industry or something like that.
And tell me again, we enter into a contract with this group to get us the best possible electric rate. What will be the cost to the city for hiring them to do that?
They will be getting a hundred, like, I believe it's a hundredth of a cent that's paid by the Texas General Land Office to them of our rate. That's, it's built into our rate. That's how they get paid. That's how all these REPs are getting paid, actually.
Okay. We have no idea what that is in percent or dollars or anything. It's just a fraction.
And dollar-wise, I couldn't tell you.
As long as we get a low rate, we're glad, glad to have it from them.
We will be locking in a rate less than what we're paying today in an environment that we anticipated increasing, so...
Okay, my last question, you may have said it, but refresh my memory. What month and date do we start saving money by having a lower electric rate for the city?
July...
2016.
Our reading begins January 1 of 2016 is what it says on their contract here, but I'm almost positive it was July of 2016 is our first.
2016.
I believe that's, I'm just almost positive. And then it goes to, like, November of 2019, and then the deal is, is you negotiate in December to get ready for your next year or something.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous vote approving a contract with The Five for the negotiation of retail electric provider.
And then our next recommendation, which I'll make the motion also, is to authorize staff to engage in a contract with the Texas...
Texas General Land Office Retail Sales Interlocal Agreement.
There you go. Cindy, did you get all that? I'm going to let the mayor repeat that here in a minute. I saw a move. That came in today, so I saw a move.
Okay, we're here, second? It's been moved by Mr. Sweeney, seconded by Mr. Nix, to allow staff, I guess the city, to enter into a contract at a rate of 4.89 cents with the Texas General Land Interlocal Agreement Office. Any discussion?
I've got a question for Mr. Kaiser. And I apologize, I did not read this email from earlier. But why, explain to me again why we need to, we're going to use The Five, hoping they can get in underneath that 4.89?
No, that, we're contracted with them now. No, they solicited on our behalf. We're basically just now making sure that they are the ones that get paid under this contract, since they cut the deal for us.
So they're a broker?
They're the broker. They're the broker. They solicited bids. We got, can remember now, I think they said like five or six proposals. Several declined. The one that we currently have is our provider, Direct Energy, declined to extend it that long, as we discussed. So our broker here got out, hustled us, whatever they do, and got us this rate. So I'm telling you, I'm telling you, with the General Land Office, so it is a direct contract now that we are approving. Not a solicitation for bid. It's a bid.
All right, but let me, I think maybe clarify a point that he may be bringing up here. We're under no obligation to The Five. They went and did this at risk pending our decision, right? Because we...
They actually didn't go do this until our committee meeting, at which time we said, hey, we like this. If you'll bring us back a contract of less than five cents, we're interested.
Right.
And so, you know, they didn't do any, I mean, they did some general work, like a lot of them do, trying to sell us.
Right, okay.
But this is the first one that came in with, in my mind, some significant savings.
Right.
As well as an extended contract. Did I answer your question? For making sure of this, okay.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries unanimous vote to approve the contract with the Texas General Land Office as negotiated.
Thank you, Mayor. Next item is Agenda Item B, is the Tax Increment Financing. Otherwise, we've referred to it in the paper and up here before as a TIF. It's a unique way that the city can use to assist in, the term they use is blighted, I don't think it's a good word for it, but in areas of the community to help to build infrastructure and for the purpose of improving our city. And I think it's a great idea. The council encourages the staff to go solicit someone to see if they could help with what's called Phase One or Stage One of a TIF plan. And they contacted Schrader and Klein. They initially were interested. And then they had some issues within their business as far as scheduling and stuff, so they withdrawn the proposal. So the committee, there's no action to take tonight, but the committee encourages the staff or directed the staff to go seek other guidance from other locations. And one of the things we talked about is going to Marble Falls. We know that they've done one recently, and so we're in the process of scheduling a trip to Marble Falls and talk with their staff and so on. And so we'll be inviting council members to go with us to do that. Anybody have any questions about that? Next item is Item C, which is the Grants. One of the things that we hear a lot from citizens, which I think is a great thing to do, is let's go, you know, we send a lot of tax money to the state of Texas, a lot of tax money to the federal government, why don't we get some of it back? And so we, I asked Mark to at our last council meeting, or committee meeting, to... And so we, I asked Mark to, at our last council meeting, or committee meeting, to present to us, show us all the money that we've gotten, other grants, and the staff have worked really hard to do that. And I think this year we have seven million dollars, is that correct? Is that the number, some, in that neighborhood? So I want you all to know, I appreciate all the, whoever it is that did all the work to do that, I appreciate that. There is going, there are some matching requirements that we'll do, but it's, it's cheap money when somebody else sends us three fourths or eighty percent of the money and says, here, do this project. So I appreciate what y'all did, what y'all do to make that happen. So any questions about grants? Everybody was there, I think, at the meeting. Next item.
Doug, if you wouldn't mind, I, I'd just like to echo that and, and mark into the staff for, for the work, because I know that sometimes this comes in, as, as the council does, at the last minute, and, and you've got to scramble to make it happen. And so, so thanks for doing that and staying on top of this to, to pull these things from idea to submittal on time. So it wouldn't happen without that.
Thank you. Agenda Item D is a Debt Service. We have a sewer project that we're looking at doing this year, and I'll let Mark talk about the particular zone that we're working on. But the, we currently, there's, I think Mark has used the phrase windows of opportunity, when we have the ability to restructure our debt in a way that will help us do some large projects. And there's a million dollar project coming up, and so I'm gonna let Mark talk about it, then I'm gonna make a motion that we accept.
Yes, we, actually, this time last year, we had approved the concept in the beginning stages and the, the full planning of, of addressing some of the sewer lines in particular. We've done several studies regarding, we call them sanitary sewer overflows, but it's basically just an initiative to try to find out where those broken pipes are, to try to repair those areas, because not only do we have the CPs going into the sewer system that puts an additional requirements onto the wastewater treatment plant, but it, it just becomes continual maintenance issues that we have to deal with. So it becomes an efficiency matter. We, last year had recommended that we look at a project in Second Street, Cage, Grossbeck, Hyman, kind of over in that neighborhood, just to the east, to the west of Alexander Road. That's been an area that, that we have several, from all of our studies, we've got several challenges over in that area, and so we're trying to address a lot of the maintenance concerns. We put together a, a package and a project of approximately a million dollars in size. I believe it's a little less than that, but by the time we have all of our other engineering costs, administrative fees and those things that, that go along with it. So we're saying a million dollar project, it'll be in that area. We anticipate us bidding that project within the next forty-five to sixty days. And so in order for us to initiate and award that contract to a contractor, we have to have the money in hand to be able to pay the contractor when they get, complete their work. With that said, then, we had recommended that we borrow the money, a million dollars, for that particular project. It does, one, one last little piece here, we had also put in one of these grants, we put in a grant for that similar area, in that area. And so we're going to be combining the two projects to try to maximize our dollars in all ways possible here. So we'll be using, I believe it's a two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant that we've received. We had some matching requirements there, plus this project. So hopefully, we're going to have some significant improvements in that area, both for us in the long term. But in order to begin that process, one of the things, in order for us to issue the million dollars to pay for this project and to keep everything coordinated, we, we are and have presented and prepared a notice of intent to issue a million dollars in the form of a certificates of obligation, that is combination tax and revenue certificates. Every bit of this will be paid for by, by the revenue generated from the water and sewer rates. So everything will be paid for there. We do have a sample timeline, and I want to kind of just briefly, just to walk you through. I don't think we've issued, well, we did a refunding here a while back, but this is quite a bit different than a refunding. I don't think we've issued any new money in, in several years. So I've got a little timeline here of exactly, on page sixteen of your agenda, and, and I'll just give you some key points. Tonight will be the first night, we just basically will make some notifications, we'll begin some publication requirements that are necessary, as well as notifying the banks and our creditors that we do intend, intend to issue a million dollars. That allows everybody to take a, a look at our credit ratings, allows the public to, to be involved and participate in that discussion at, at any time. We'll have those publications, we will solicit bids, and it will give a notification to the respective, those that would be interested. I do anticipate, because of the size of this, while a million dollars is a lot of money, it's very small in relation to municipal debts of any kind. Most likely, this will be a, a private placement. I anticipate seeing our local banks, whether individually or collectively, possibly going together and buying a portion of this. And at the end of the day, we will award, and you will take action. The next time you will see this, we'll be with a fixed interest rate, as well as action to, asking you on November the nineteenth. So at, at that particular night, we will go ahead and schedule a special council meeting for you to act at that time, to issue the million dollars, so that we can, then in turn, we won't see the money until about another thirty days later after that particular process. And I believe it says, on December the eighteenth, when, when we'd actually see the money and be able to pay the contractors. So at the same time, I'm letting you also just know that you will be seeing the contract and the bid award for that project. Now, the last thing is, I do want to kind of talk a little bit about, because we've had a, a great deal of discussion over the last year, especially the last six months or so, regarding our debt capacity, where, how the debt is affecting our rates, and, and how all of this falls into play here. An illustration of probably what I anticipate and what, at least what they advise, our financial advisors advise, the million dollars would be paid out, and recommended to be paid out, as seen on page fifteen. There's two points that I really want to point out. The first is that you will see that the first one, two, three, four, five years, first five years, we will be making a twenty, twenty thousand dollar principal payment. We're going to have very minimal principal payments those first year. We do have to make a principal payment of a minimum of two percent. So that's why you see twenty, twenty thousand dollars of principal. So we do have to always make some form of principal payment. But the bigger piece is, is that as you see, our debt service payments, we've talked on many occasions, in two thousand and nineteen, our utility fund, water sewer fund, is expected to be, up to this point in time, we are scheduled to be completely out of debt at that time. What we are doing here is wrapping it around, saying the minimum, minimum principal payments for the first five years to twenty nineteen, and then after twenty nineteen, we'll aggressively pay it out over the next five years. So we are talking about a ten-year debt retirement, is what we're talking about.
An entire water sewer project.
To retire this million dollars on this sewer project. We're talking about ten years, paying this off in ten years, okay? The, the last bid is, I just want to, just so that you can, we can follow along and discuss, you can see that our, our total debt payments are at two million. On the far right-hand column on that worksheet, page fifteen, still on page fifteen, our total debt payments, our current debt payment is, is two, a little over two million, just less than two million one. And then you see, the first year, obviously, our first year, we'll be paying a significant amount of interest that first year, really, along with the principal that first year, will be at two point one million. And then we'll stay with, actually, we dropped below the two billion dollars in total debt payments. What I'm, the emphasis there is, what I want to tell you is, is there's not going to be the pressure for us to raise rates as a result of our debt, okay? It's what I'm trying to tell you. Our debt is staying relatively constant, and we structured it that way on purpose. Actually, with a slight window of opportunity here, we could actually pay a little bit more principal in seventeen through nineteen, as you see there. But, you know, we're intentionally structuring it this way. But we will not have the pressure on our debts, debt-wise, to raise the rates. So what I'm telling you is, our existing rates will pay for this project with the wraparound structure that we have here. So with, with that said, I will be glad to answer any other questions. I just want to make it very clear, the action that we are asking you tonight is, you are not voting on issuing the debt tonight. This will be the first of a couple of publications before we actually issue the debt on November nineteenth. So with that, you'll just need to make that notice of intent, so we can start the publication.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I'm going to make the motion that we adopt Resolution twenty thirteen oh eight, which is directing the publication notification, or the Notice of Intent to Issue Combination Tax and Revenue Certificates of Obligation.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Sveens, seconded by Mr. McDaniel, to adopt Resolution twenty thirteen zero eight, directing publication of a Notice of Intent to Issue Certificates of Obligation to Fund Construction Costs of Water and Sewer Lines. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries unanimous vote to adopt Resolution twenty thirteen zero eight as presented.
Mayor, that's the end of our committee meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Nix for the Public Works Committee report.
Thank you, Mayor. On, on the seventeenth, we met with all of our committee members present, myself as chair, Mr. Evans, Mr. Pendleton, and Mr. Hogan. We discussed our contract with the Upper Leon River Municipal Water District, and Mr. Gary Lacy, who is the manager of that district, came, and he made a very informative presentation to us about the water district, about how it came into being, and how they serve their customers, and who their customers were, and some of the requirements that they're struggling to meet right now. And I, I guess the bottom line of that report was that because of the requirements that the TCEQ is going to impose on them, they're going to need to add to and improve their facilities. And to pay for that, they're going to increase their water rates that they are charging us and the other users. Our rate will go from three oh four per thousand to three ninety-six per thousand with the renewal of our contract with them. There was no action necessary, it was an informative report, and when we see their contract, we'll have an opportunity to look at those rates as they're finalized at that time. We had another item that we discussed in executive session, and we will discuss that item later in another executive session. There was no action necessary on either one of these, and that was the end of my report, Mayor. I could do better than Mr. Sveens.
You and Scott.
Thank you.
See what you're gonna miss, Martha?
Any question? Martha, you want to ask a question? All right, thank you, thank you, Alan, for that report. Next, we've got the Environmental Management Committee and Mr. Pendleton.
I will try to beat you, Mr. Nix.
Good luck.
You're probably right about that. Okay, on September seventeenth, the Environmental Management Committee met, including myself, Mr. Cross, Mr. Nix, and Mr. McDaniel. The only item of business we discussed at that committee meeting was our contract with Progressive Waste Solutions. We had a couple items to consider, on what action we would like to direct the staff to take. Ultimately, that the decision that was casted from that committee meeting was to direct staff to renegotiate our contract with Progressive Waste Solutions. I know at this time, we have some people from Progressive here today, along with Mark. If there's any questions that'd like to be addressed, I'll get along with them at this time.
One of the things we talked about was the ability to use the, to negotiate part of our own landfill, and some income there.
The, you know, the issue at, at this time was really to negotiate or to bid it. And we've, we can go many ways, but the questions that are, and we're not answering those questions tonight, and we will be answering the questions, and the obvious, but then there will continue to be others that come about over the next three months, are with recycling, we fully understand. We're talking about the residential and commercial rates and the balance that occurs there. I mean, because if, if, you know, if, if residential rates are too low, and assets, and the commercial rates, customers are having to subsidize, and vice versa, along with, we also do have a type four landfill that we continue to encourage. And then we have, on many occasions, discussed, and probably one of the things that we've dealt with has been the maintenance issues that occur to our roads, our, our roads and to our communities. We are very fortunate right now, but please understand that we do currently have a bulky item pickup that I can tell you most communities do not have. And so all of those items put together, we will be negotiating, and again, all, all the representatives with Progressive Waste here, the district manager, regional manager, and local manager, I'm not sure what all their titles are, but we've got them all covered here with us tonight. And, you know, they're very excited, again, I, I'll just tell you, we're very blessed to have a, a low rate, and, but we're going to do our best to keep it that away. But anyway, with that said, I'll just tell you, we're, tonight's action does not in any way resolve those issues. And I just want to make it clear that all of those are on the table. And whether we bid it or negotiate it, we're still going to have those ongoing and aggressive discussions to resolve and make sure we're providing the best for the community and the citizens here, as to what they would like as well, in an efficient and cost-efficient way. So hopefully, we've addressed it. And all we're really asking tonight is, is do you authorize us to, staff to negotiate, along with the Environmental Committee, to negotiate this contract? Or otherwise, they're not going to, they're going to hold their bid to their vest until the bidding process. So staff does recommend, wholeheartedly, and for, for a number of reasons, which I could explain if you ask, but, you know, at the end of the day, I'll tell you that they've been a great provider. They're territorial in nature, these, these companies are. And for that, I recommend that we negotiate with Progressive Waste, and I believe they will give us the best service, the best quality, for the best price for this community and these citizens.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Just a quick question. Forgive me, my brain is, I broadcasted two football games since this last meeting, so my brain's in a million places. But why not open it up for bid? And was the reasoning that you didn't think we'd get a better, a better rate?
Well.
Is there any downside to that, I guess I should say?
The, you know, the downside, I mean, I'm going to sit here and just say, the way I look at it is, is really trying to weigh the, the cost-effective approaches, and what do I anticipate and see based upon our industry, you know, me being involved in this industry and, and dealing with these contracts for the last twenty-plus years. The bigger piece is, is that the industry itself, territory, establishes the territories for their, within their respect. So they already create somewhat of that environment and take that away from us. And I'm going to sort of say it very similar to the telephone companies, electric companies, or, or some of those. You know, they each have their own territories where they've established, and they've, they've, they've got the investment, the capital investment, they've already put all the infrastructure in place to be able to do that. And so what they're going to do is, if, if they ever wish, which we've seen this, I've seen this occur twice, twice in my tenure here, is they end up selling their contract, if they wish to not represent Stevie anymore, they're going to go sell their contract to another provider, and then they work it out, and then they just come and tell us, and then we've got to sit here and hash out the service and the rate for those services. So my bigger piece, the real reason why, is I think they've already kind of done the negotiation of who's going to be our provider in this area, they service this territory. Now, if you feel that, which I have not heard nor seen, BFI Waste Management, Republic Waste, even, even a local provider, at one time, we had a local provider that was trying to get started. That's really kind of how IESI got started. I've yet to see or hear any within our, our region. Our region is covered right now by Progressive Waste. And so, you know, that, that, that's our chosen provider, not by us, but just by geographic placement.
They already have the infrastructure.
They've, they've already got it all put in place. Now, what really is happening here, and the significance for us is, is, is they're, they're at a point where they've got to make some additional investment. And they're not going to make that investment, i.e. some new trucks and some other things. They're not going to be making that additional investment until they know that, again, that we've kind of got a five-year contract, and right now, they've got a ninety-day contract. So, so we're in the process, and, and, you know, where the leverage comes in, the traction comes in, the ability to, to strongly negotiate is, is to just say, you know, you want this, we want this, and, and, you know, and be fruitful in that area, you know? With that said, I mean, I know there's, there's several other opportunities out there. With that said, I mean, I know there's, there's several other opportunities out there. We asked, and we go to TML here in a couple weeks, for those that are going, and I believe the chair of the committee's going, so he'll be able to ask a couple of the other providers, you know, they're all gonna sit here and say, you know, yeah, that's, it's all good, fine and dandy, but that's part of why we also check the rates with other communities, we also do the negotiation pieces of it, you know, 'cause it's, you're just gonna buy service, and we gotta determine what our service is for this community.
Thank you.
Hopefully, I answered the question.
Okay. Mr. McGann?
Mark, I had a question.
Yes, sir.
Since EISI sold to Progressive Waste Solutions, I've noticed that the ugly green rusted dumpsters are disappearing and they're putting blue ones in. Can we expect that, pretty freshly painted blue ones, can we expect that to continue across town?
And, and we, we can discuss that even more, but I will tell you, yes.
All right. Big difference, big difference in view from the street, in the two.
You know, it, it gets down to them making some investment here, and, and it's that time, you know, that they're gonna continue to, to make a good positive impression, especially, you know, for the next year or so, as, as the new money starts showing up in the form of new equipment and new pieces of, so, you know, yeah, it'll be nice. You know, just for the record, IESI is really, and has always been a, a part of the Progressive Waste corporate, big, big corporation. I mean, they just, they, they never changed the name, they never changed the name here until the last year or so, is the way I've understood the corporate structure, but, and they're all shaking their head, yes, I was hoping I said it correctly, so, you know.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, I'd just like to say real quickly, to kind of extend from what Mark said, I mean, we have a very competitive rate here when you compare it to a lot of comparable cities, and plus, not to mention the bulk service, but also twice-a-week service, which a lot of places do not get twice a week. If you look around, Progressive has invested our community, they employ people here, and so I think it's wise in our decision-making to go ahead and negotiate with these people directly, 'cause I believe both parties are gonna come out on top, in my opinion. So, at this time, I'll move to negotiate, or to direct staff to renegotiate our contract with Progressive Waste Solutions.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Pendleton, seconded by Ms. Taylor, to ask staff to negotiate or renegotiate with Progressive Waste Solutions. Any discussion?
You, the committee, will not be out of those negotiations, so please understand, while I appreciate you saying staff, it will be the committee as well.
Okay.
And, and if I may, I also would love to welcome the public and other citizens to direct any complaints or concerns they might have about the services and ideas to, to myself, and would be more than happy to advance those to the committee and the staff and to Progressive, so.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, you know, Brady, we, we talked about this in the committee meeting, and I, I do think it would be good for the, the committee to, to take input on what items need to be negotiated. We, we've talked about recycling, we've talked about performance measures, we've talked about maintenance, we've talked about landfill use, we've talked about bulky items. All those would appear to be items that should be, you know, considered in that negotiation process, and, and so I know the committee will look to, to bring those together in a consolidated list so that we can look at the cost benefit of each of those as we go forward. Any other questions or, okay, then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, unanimous vote to proceed with contract negotiations with Progressive Waste Solutions. Anything else on the committee report?
That will conclude our committee, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Nix, you got him.
Just by the hair of my chin, too.
All right, next on the agenda is item eight, which is the nominations committee. I'll turn it over to Dr. Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The nominations committee, consisting of myself and councilmembers McDaniel, Evans, and Taylor, had the sad task of meeting on September eighteenth, twenty thirteen, to discuss the best way to select a successor to Councilmember Taylor. It is the committee's recommendation that the vacancy be kept open until the May fourteenth, twenty fourteen election, at which time it would be filled by direct popular election. And that is the committee recommendation. I move that the council accept it.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Dr. Cross, seconded by Ms. Taylor, to keep the vacancy of Place Seven open until the, the next scheduled election. Any discussion? No? Okay, we'll proceed to vote then. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Place Seven will remain vacant until the next scheduled election in May of twenty fourteen.
That concludes nominations committee business, and I think the nominations committee holds the record for this meeting at least, with the shortest amount of time allotted to it.
Okay, well, we're gonna reopen your committee meeting, Dr. Cross, just for a second to, to look at the, the vacation of the, the Place Seven position. Ms. Taylor was the chair of the Personnel Committee, and I think when Mark sent his email out earlier today, he had the, the recommendation that I'm making to the council to, to fill that vacancy from within. The committee right now, with her departure, will include Councilmember Hogan, Evans, and Sivin, and Ho, Casey is the, the one member that is not a committee chair of that group, and so, we'd like the council to consider Councilmember Hogan to take that place as the committee chair for the Personnel Committee.
Will the mayor accept the motion?
Uh, yes.
Mayor, I move that Casey Hogan be named as the new chairman of the Personnel Committee, effective immediately.
Second.
Effective at the end of this meeting, after the second session.
Sorry, Martha.
Sorry, Mark, Alan. I get you every last minute.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Mr. Nix, to appoint Councilmember Hogan at the end of this meeting to the chair of the Personnel Committee. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
If you ask him if he was interested in this.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I'm definitely, it's gonna be very tough to, to fill Chairman Taylor's shoes, but, but, um...
Somebody's gotta do it.
Somebody's gotta do it. And I had some important issue, and, you know, and I've been a, I've never been a city employee, but I've been a federal government employee that worked seventy to eighty hours a week and made thirty-five thousand dollars a year in one of the, one of the most expensive cities in, in, in our country, and so I know how tough it is, and how tough it is to make ends mean, and we need to take care of our staff, and, and I think that we might have different views as how, how we're gonna get there, but I think everyone that up here at the front of the room wants to take care of our staff, make sure that they're treated, treated fair, and, and so I look forward to serving in that role. We'll miss you, Ms. Taylor. I'll be expecting a few phone calls, and if I mess up, I'll expect you to, to come find me, so.
Okay. All right, so we'll proceed to vote then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries unanimous. Councilmember Hogan is the Personnel Committee Chair. All right, we'll proceed then to the consent agenda.
Mayor, on this side of the council, on this side, you're right, we've all suggested that this, we allow Ms. Taylor to address the consent agenda.
One by one?
In honor of Joe Kood, however you wanna do it, either open it up or the whole thing.
I would move we approve the entire contents of the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Sivin, to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do you have order, Mayor? I've got a, a couple of items in our regular minutes of the meetings that last month that are typos. Do I need to get those corrected now, or? Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'd like to pull off A-one and A-three, please. It will be briefly.
Okay, Alan, in my motion to approve items A-two and the remaining contents of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Sivin, to approve the consent agenda with items A-two, B, C, D, and E. All those, any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the consent agenda presented as stated. And then we'll address items A-one and A-three. Councilmember McDaniel.
On page twenty-five, the second line from the top of the page, I believe the verbiage is overnight jump and unleaded gasoline. It says, huh?
The H is right next to the J on the typewriter.
Right, okay. And then the other item on page thirty-two, about the middle of the page, it will be the second paragraph, it's, it's just a repeti, repetition. It says, "Do you believe raising taxes on all the citizens and businesses will help? The citizens and businesses will help." We need to take out that repetition of the citizens and businesses will help, turn that around. And that's all I saw that...
With those motion, I, I move that we accept the items as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Sivin, seconded by Mr. Hogan, to accept the, the changes as noted. Any discussion?
Do we need to add any exclamation points in there?
I don't know. I think quotations can be figured out, whether it's just one.
Okay, let's go ahead and proceed to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries as presented. All right, we'll, we'll proceed now to comments by the city administrator, Mark.
Thank you. I'd like to give a couple of quick updates in regards to the construction around town. The first and most notable that is a city project is Alexander Road. Alexander Road should be completed within the next three to four weeks. We are, we're almost there. And I, I know that the residents are, are very excited for that to be completed, and we're just as excited as they are. The contractors working diligently, you should, just as a side note, they are gonna begin pouring the concrete for the other side, the other half, they're actually gonna start at the end of this week. So, we should start seeing quite a bit more activity in that area. You know, they are, they are right on time, everything is working like it's supposed to be working. Again, I just know that it's been a long process between the utility work and the road construction, and, and hopefully, just very soon will be, be completed there. The, I've had many, many questions regarding the traffic signal at FM nine, nine eighty-eight and Washington slash three seventy-seven, so the traffic signal that now is a four-way signal in front of Tractor Supply slash Exxon slash Techstar Ford, try to give them all a good plug while I'm talking about it, but they've had, the contractor is out there today, if you haven't seen, out there today, we're trying to get there, trying to get that put back up in operation. It's been the controller, I know, everybody, I've had people say, well, nobody ran over the poles, or the lights didn't get swiped off, or something, you know, it's, it's the brains of the thing, and they are working diligently, they're very aware of it, and, and trying to get that back up and operational. They do not have a tentative timeline for when that will be completed, but, but please understand that they are very aware, they're trying to get it very active. I want to remind you, as we're talking about nine eighty-eight, FM nine eighty-eight, while there are a lot of questions, there's a lot of rumors, there's a lot of, a lot of things being said, I will tell you that the project is going, like every construction project, it's going, and they are on time. They are going to be completed in November, end of November, and with that said, every construction job has different challenges, and I've recently given the illustration, and because I can tell you that we have the same things here when we got on Alexander Road. When you get into a renovation project of any kind, if you've ever gone into a renovation, you don't know what's behind the wall, but the minute you have to tear something up, and all of a sudden, you start seeing what's happening, you have situations that have to change, you have to modify, and you have to continue to, continue to complete the project. But they're doing it, and they're doing it right, they're doing it the way it needs to be done, and when it is completed, it'll be something we're all proud of, it'll be something they're proud of, and, again, we just all need to be patient while they are doing their work, and so I please just ask everyone. Unfortunately, or fortunate, I think it's fortunate, because even though it does, can be stressful, while all of these projects, while that project is going on, the city's been doing Alexander Road, Dale Street. Dale Street should be, it really is completed, we've got some punch- list cleanup items, same thing with Michael Haney, I think we're, I believe we may be real close to being completely finished there. All of that project was under one contractor. We had the light go out, and then we've also had them, excuse me, begin construction. As you saw, we, they did Washington Street all the way through, that's been very nice, they did it, they did it right, did it timely. But then also the intersection that occurred, and the, the rework that they've been doing at the intersection of Graham and Langueville Highway, everybody's just going, my goodness, couldn't they schedule this any better? One of the things that I just, I've been trying to just explain to people is, there really is a small window of construction time, and I say small window, to be ideal for road construction, and that is during, when the weather's correct, you gotta hit it in between, no rain, and so the ideal time has been to get this all completed before the winter, before the weather starts changing, because you want it to cure, you want it to be set up, and you want it to, to perform the way you've designed it to do so. So, all of these projects, everybody's trying to work around each other, we apologize for the inconvenience, but I'm excited that the improvements are getting done, they've been on the drawing board for many, many years, and I'm so excited to see a lot of these come to fruition and be completed here. And when, by this time next year, we'll, we'll probably be hoping we had another project to be, that we were getting constructed. But I do wanna give that. The last thing is, I just, I know that there's been, while I'm talking about all the projects between the city and Techstar, they, any day that you should begin seeing construction at the corner of Ollie and Washington, the equipment is, it's supposed to be here just any day, and we're gonna be the first ones to get worked on. Everything, the property, I believe, Dr. Sheffield, Representative Sheffield's representative referred to it earlier, Councilman Johnson, and mentioned it earlier, that there was some right-of-way issues, everything has been secured, everything's been approved, all the funding's been in place, the products have been ordered, and we are literally just waiting for them to come in. So, if it starts while all of this other construction's going on, it's one of those things that you just, when it all comes together, it is, I just ask you to be patient and, and be careful as this construction's going on. You're gonna continue to see things, the school projects will both be, be completed here in, at the end of this year, so we're gonna have a lot of transition with a lot of the city streets with their projects and into their new parking lots as they come in. So, you're gonna still continue to see a lot of changes occur, and let me just say that we're more important, it's more important, and it has been for us, for staff, for the contractors, and everybody, to do it right, and let's do it right the first time while we're making all these inconveniences. And then the second thing is, is after we do it correctly, obviously, we wanna do it in as efficient a timeframe as we can. So, very proud of what's happening, and, and hopefully, I've answered some questions. I know it, there's not much to answer there. I, I tell you that I, I believe ninety percent of the rumors are not necessarily true. Again, it really is just a patient, patience issue that we need to have in this community, and let's wait for those things to occur, 'cause it, it's gonna be nice. With that said, I just, we do have several meetings scheduled, this is the time of year, we're very blessed to be in Stevieville, Texas. This is the first day of our physical year, so it's the first day of a new year for us, and we're excited. You have approved some projects to already begin get, some new projects to begin, and we are excited to continue to see those all come to fruition over the next twelve months. So, with that said, I'll be glad to answer any other questions.
Okay.
That you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mark? Okay, councilmembers' comments, Mr. Hogan?
I've none.
Dr. Cross?
I do have a few comments in response to some of the remarks made by citizens at the beginning of the meeting, and I want to emphasize that I'm speaking purely for myself, even though I was named along with several other council... along with several other council members, uh, who, um, whose voting, voting record is similar to mine. Please keep in mind these record, these remarks, uh, reflect purely my own perspectives on matters. Uh, the first issue I want to talk is, uh, concerns public opinion and the difficulty in trying to measure it. Um, the plain, blunt truth of the matter is, is that public opinion is one of the most elusive, uh, mythical political beasts, uh, in the political world. And the reason is simple. Uh, nobody really knows how to measure public opinion accurately. Uh, it is a known fact that the results elicited by public opinion polls, um, are shaped not only by the questions that are asked, but by who asks them, how they're asked, uh, who is selected to answer them. And, uh, I can guarantee beyond the slightest shadow of a doubt that I can elicit a public, I can design a public opinion poll that will generate any results anyone wants, uh, no matter how stupid, idiotic, silly, or sadistic those results may be. Um, if you want a poll, I know how to, how to get one, and that will, uh, produce the results you want. Um, but we're told that public opinion was represented by, uh, the number of people who came and spoke against the tax increase. And I would like to address, uh, my remarks there, uh, in that regard. Um, I did a tally, sixteen people, uh, came and spoke before the council over three meetings, at least according to my tally, all opposed a tax increase. Um, somebody else did an analysis of the sixteen who came, um, taking into consideration number of people who repeated, and whether or not they were city residents or county residents. Now, about the issue of participation of county residents. Uh, county residents had every right under the Constitution of the United States, under the Constitution of Texas, under the Stevensville City Charter, to come and express their opinions. And I believe the county residents, no less than city residents, uh, should be taken seriously. We should always take into consideration the content of an opinion before we accept it or reject it. But, uh, another person, as I say, who analyzed this, um, who analyzed the demographics, so to speak, of those who came and spoke, noted that when you take into consideration the number of people who came to two or more meetings and spoke more than once, and as well as where they lived, roughly only half a dozen city residents came and spoke against the tax increase total. Some spoke more than once. Um, six people out of a population of eighteen thousand. Now, some of you may believe that you can infer public opinion accurately from the remarks of sixteen people out of eighteen thousand. I respectfully beg to differ. Um, but that is a matter on which I suspect we will simply have to agree to disagree. Um, another point that was made is how, uh, every year since two thousand nine, we've had a tax increase up to the rate of forty-nine and a half cents. Keep in mind that this was a one-cent tax increase that would have raised, uh, taxes on someone owning a hundred thousand dollars worth of property by roughly eighty-three cents a month. Uh, whether or not that was burdensome is in the eye of the beholder. I take very, very seriously the assertion that, uh, enough little, uh, tax increases could, under some circumstances, add up to a gigantic burden. There's always going to be the, the straw that broke the camel's back. Um, I would like to offer a somewhat different perspective with regard to that, however. The plain, blunt truth of the matter is, is that ten years ago, the tax rate was forty-eight and a half cents per hundred dollars evaluation. And the council, in addition to raising taxes when necessary, cut taxes when necessary as well. I have participated on city councils where we have count, where we, uh, cut the, uh, tax rate by roughly a nickel. And basically what we've been doing, what the, this council has been doing, or at least the councils that I personally have served on have been doing, uh, has, uh, has been to, uh, cut taxes when we can afford to do so, raise taxes when we can't afford not to. We are not ideologically supportive of either tax cuts or tax increases. The best we can do, uh, is do our best under the circumstances, and then take whatever medicine the voters choose to, uh, administer to us, which gets me back to public opinion. Uh, the only legally binding public opinion, which we can truly and generally and genuinely take seriously, is the opinion of the voters at the polls on election day. Those expressions of opinion are relatively clear and unambiguous. And as an example of how I respect greatly, um, public opinion as expressed in free elections, I would like to remind the folks that when I ran for council for the first time, my platform was vigorous enthusiastic support of the Procter Pipeline. After an election in which eighty-seven percent of the public rejected the Procter Pipeline, I said, I told this council that to honor the election results, I would not support the Procter Pipeline any further until the verdict of the voters, as expressed in a free election, was reversed by another verdict of the voters, as expressed in a free election. And for that reason, when the rest of the council voted to go ahead with the Procter Pipeline project anyway, I voted against it. I opposed it, I was outvoted, that's the way it goes. Now, let us turn our attention, uh, to, uh, other issues, factors that, uh, help increase revenue but which also drive up spending. Let us begin with the assertion that we must balance our budget. Reason, the law says so. The city of Stevensville is not a sovereign entity. The city of Stevensville, from strictly legal point of view, is an administrative subdivision created by the state of Texas and subject to the rules imposed on the city by the state of Texas. If the state of Texas says, "You must balance your budget," we have no choice unless we want to take up permanent residence in Gatesville for, uh, mismanagement of funds, things like that. Uh, that is not a prospect that I personally, uh, care to see in my future. Now, it's a fact that natural demographic and economic growth will result in an increase in revenue. Even if we kept the tax rate at forty-eight and a half cents, we would still have more revenue, uh, next year than we're getting at the end of this year. It is also a fact that all too often, usually, not always, but usually, inflation drives up the cost of services more rapidly than economic and demographic growth drives up the availability of revenue. This creates an unfortunate situation. We must either raise taxes incrementally to generate enough revenue to maintain services at the current level, or we must cut services. One other alternative, we can dip into reserves. But once those reserves are gone, again, we're faced with the choice of either raising taxes even more to generate revenue, or cutting services even more. And it was this last datum, the fact that we might have to cut services if we did not raise taxes, which led me to vote for the one penny tax increase. I attended meetings of several, uh, conservative political groups led by county residents whose leadership was encouraging county residents to come to the city council to exercise their right to ask that the city not raise taxes. And I also listened very carefully to those who came, whether they were from the city or from the county. I listened very carefully to what they had to say, uh, about taxes. And in the various groups, at which I tried to speak before being ruled out of order, I challenged these groups with the following observation. I noted that at the various meetings I was attending, significant sentiment was being expressed in favor of tax cuts. So I challenged them, "Come up with spending cuts so that we may continue to discharge our legal duty, not our right, our duty, to balance the budget." Where do we cut services? What services do we cut? And I was invariably told, before I was ruled out of order for doing the functional equivalent of shouting obscenities in a church, that it is not the job of those who advocate tax cuts to suggest spending cuts. Tax cuts, the advocacy of tax cuts is a right of the citizens, the formulation of spending cuts is an obligation of us. Whether or not that makes sense, that is what I was told. I also listened to each and every one of the people who spoke before this city council. They all said, "Hold the line on taxes." Only one person in the three meetings at which these people spoke had anything specific to say about where we could cut spending idea. Privatize Splashville. That was the first, last, and only suggestion for a spending cut. To the extent one can infer public opinion from the remarks of those who spoke before the council, the pattern is obvious. Tax cuts, good. Spending cuts, bad. Balancing the budget, you guys, you whom we've elected, figure that one out for yourself. Just don't take us off by, uh, either raising taxes or cutting spending. Now, a couple of other points. Oh, by the way, I should mention, of course, that, uh, my good friend, Mrs. Cole, did suggest some specific spending cuts tonight. So she becomes the second person to speak before the city council on the necessity for spending cuts to be correlated with tax cuts. That's two people out of eighteen thousand. Again, draw what, uh, conclusions you will about public opinion. Um, two final ideas that I wish to address, economic development and personnel. Um, like others, I believe in economic development. The question is, how do we go about proceeding it? First of all, the benefits of economic development are obvious. More businesses in town will generate more sales tax revenue, more jobs, this will ease the tax burden. Whether or not we should support economic development is a slam dunk, it's a no-brainer. I would respectfully submit, however, that the best way this council can support economic development is through providing quality services supported by a reasonable, um, by a reasonable, um, tax rate. And I'm pleased and proud of the fact that we've been able to hold the line, over a decade, we've been able to pretty much hold the line on taxes. So only this one cent tax increase, uh, over the last ten years, net increase over the ten years, over the last ten years. We should, we should also provide a level playing field in which everyone can compete with neither advantage nor disadvantage administered by the city. And I will support whatever, uh, changes in our regulations need to be affected in order to maintain a level playing field, as well as increase the economy and efficiency with which business can be conducted. Now, there are a couple of things that I personally am devoutly opposed and which I will not tolerate. I am devoutly opposed to any sort of tax breaks to give benefits to some at the expense of others. Uh, sometimes, given the fact that there's only a finite amount of tax revenue, whenever some taxes go down, sometimes, not always, sometimes when taxes for some go down, taxes for others must go up. That's simple mathematics, tax policy one oh one. Also, the second thing that I oppose when it comes to economic development is to have this council openly solicit new businesses to come in and compete with city businesses, existing businesses. Keep in mind that our current city businesses pay us taxes. I do not for the slightest moment think that any business currently in operation in the city is paying us to go out and look for competitors. And the third thing we must not do is to allow, is to prevent anyone from coming in. They're paying taxes, the existing businesses are paying taxes, that gives them the right to compete. It does not give them the right to be protected by those who can do a better job. Now, the final point that I wish to address is personnel policy. Because quite frankly, ladies and gentlemen, any significant savings, any significant spending, or, uh, spending cuts must come at the expense of personnel for one very simple reason. Personnel costs, salary, wages, um, benefits account for roughly seventy percent of our budget, I believe. Seventy percent. Now, I devoutly support, uh, you know, cuts in personnel expenses if they can be affected through a combination of attrition and the development of new labor-saving devices, management techniques, technology, things like that. Um, but I think we have to be very skeptical of any other means, um, by which we cut back on personnel, uh, if that's going to cut back on the quality of services. Again, to the extent we can measure public opinion, there is no constituency for that. And if we're to follow public opinion, that means we should not be cutting services, because nobody is demanding cutting services. So, um, I, I offer these perspectives, uh, for whatever, uh, for whatever they're worth. One final point, um, on personnel. The main reason why cities, counties, and some states are flirting with bankruptcy now is because irresponsible elected leaders gave away the store to their workforces. They did it, of course, in order to incur votes with the labor unions. And the plain, blunt truth of the matter is, is that any city has to run, has to walk a tight rope between being enlightened enough to make, to do justice to our employees and ultimately to our citizens, with reasonable wages, salaries, and fringe benefits, and jumping into bankruptcy, uh, through, uh, giving massive increases in exchange for political support. And I think it's been part of the genius of Mr. Kaiser, our city administrator, of Mrs. Taylor, the head of our Personnel Committee, that they and those who have supported them on the council have been able to help us walk this tight rope and, uh, to pursue relatively enlightened policies, um, with respect to compensation of our employees without descending into bankruptcy. And I will continue to support, um, uh, whatever policies are necessary, uh, to keep our employees, to make sure our employees get the compensation they deserve without running the risk of bankrupting the city. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Cross.